I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for November 20th, 2023. Upon arrival tonight, we found out that the elevator is not working to allow every citizen the opportunity to attend this meeting upstairs. For public comment, we're making the following accommodations. If you wish to speak, someone will be downstairs to bring up your comments in writing and we'll read them aloud on camera, or we'll come down, record you, and then play a video file so that everybody can be heard from. With Thanksgiving just a few days away, I hope everyone will have an opportunity to visit family and friends, share food, and enjoy being together. On behalf of the Board, we're grateful for our YCSD families, students, teachers, and staff. I've spoken to my fellow Board members, and I would like to yield the rest of my time to Dr. Shandor this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. Good evening, Board members. I request the opportunity to speak at the beginning of this meeting to address the charges filed against YCSD staff members. As I have a number of specific points to make and want to ensure I speak clearly on this pressing matter, I'll be reading from my notes. First and foremost, I want to say that I share our community's concerns. Learning that an adult trusted to work with children may have violated that trust is unsettling. Our most important responsibility as a school system is to provide safe, secure, and caring environments for all students. These incidents are not reflective of our division's core values and priorities which we expect all employees to uphold. The Division has layers of safeguards in place to prevent potential incidents by ensuring staff are properly trained and have the resources necessary to meet the unique needs of our students. This begins with the hiring process. All prospective employees are required to undergo a national criminal background check, which includes fingerprinting prior to being hired. Once hired, all employees participate in ongoing mandatory training and professional development regarding appropriate interactions with students, but we can and we must do more to ensure student safety. Earlier this year, our special education team identified additional tools for training staff on de-escalation strategies regarding student behavior. We have begun initial training with these new strategies, and I have directed staff to expedite training for additional staff immediately. Earlier this month, at the request of the Instruction Department, we approved funding for six additional registered behavior technician positions. This will increase the number of schools with onsite trained staff who can provide immediate support to teachers, staff, and students. These positions are now posted on the Division's website. Friday, I assembled a team of Division administrators to begin the initial work of developing short-term and long-term actions in response to these incidents. One first step would be to convene a task force of administrators, teachers, families, and representatives from social services and related fields. Our goal is to have the first meeting take place before winter break. I've already spoken with the President of the York County Council of PTAs to seek representation in this work, and have contacted the Chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee requesting the same. Effective immediately, I'm directing all employees to review identified policies, regulations, and standard operating procedures related to student safety and maintaining positive safe learning environments, specifically the mandatory reporting requirement of suspected abuse or neglect. This is in addition to our existing requirements which occur at the beginning of each school year. Let me reiterate that YCSD takes any accusation of inappropriate conduct by a staff member seriously. In all cases, we take personnel action in accordance with policy and law, and we cooperate with law enforcement investigations. As we believe it takes a collective commitment to achieve our priorities, I encourage our students and families to report concerns using the YCSD hotline (757) 890-5000, or the reported form on the Division website and app. We will provide an update on actions taken at the December work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. I will now read the YCSD mission statement. "The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future." Next, I will share some information regarding our pledge leader this evening, Jonas Wood, a third-grade student at Waller Mill Elementary. For this month's Pledge of Allegiance, it's my honor to introduce Jonas Wood, a remarkable third-grade student at Waller Mill Elementary, who embodies the very essence of leadership and kindness. Jonas is not just a participant in our esteemed Cooking Club, a talented soccer and basketball player, and a student with an affinity for helping peers with their classwork. He's a young mind brimming with creativity, with an exceptional love for building and creating things that extend far beyond the traditional classroom boundaries. Notably, Jonas has garnered the respect and admiration of both his peers and teachers for his exceptional character and benevolence. His remarkable demonstration of compassion earned him a well-deserved Character Trade Award. As his teacher attests, Jonas is not only kind-hearted, but also a natural leader in the classroom. He fearlessly takes charge and consistently displays positivity and integrity, making him a role model for his peers. Beyond his academic pursuits, Jonas extends his leadership and service through his involvement in Boy Scouts at his church, showcasing his commitment to both personal growth and community service. His passion for math and science aligns with his aspirations to become an engineer, while his dedication to sports hints at a potential future as an athlete. School counselor's words beautifully encapsulate Jonas's essence as a shining light at Waller Mill, always seeking out opportunities to assist others and continuously thinking outside the box. His multifaceted interests and unwavering commitment to doing what is right make him an exemplary candidate to lead our school board meeting in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Jonas inspires us all with his genuine spirit, unwavering dedication, and his embodiment of the qualities that Waller Mill holds dear. His leadership and kind-hearted nature will undoubtedly shine through as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, representing Waller Mill with pride and honor. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're going to move into our awards and recognitions, and we're going to start with our Seniors of the Month. First off tonight is Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Thomas Schreiner and his mother and father, Greg and Susan, and as well as Sarah, his sister, okay? Thomas Schreiner is resilient, reliable, compassionate, and truly integrated in his community. He participates in the Literary Arts Program of the School of the Arts, and he is taking part in a 140-hour field experience opportunity and research project this year. His drive, focus, and hard work have placed him in the top 3% of his class. Thomas holds membership on New York County Youth Commission, currently serving as Chairman. Having a voice in advocating, whether it be for himself or others, remains important to Thomas. Beyond his academic involvement, Thomas serves as President of the Student Council Association and served as Class Treasurer in his sophomore and junior year. He is also a member of the National Honor Society, Chemistry Honor Society, and Treasurer of the French Honor Society. Additionally, Thomas has been a member of the French Club, Key Club, Future Business Leaders of America, Prom Committee, and Panther Achievement Leaders. He has participated in Centerra's Junior Volunteer Summer Program for the past two years and volunteers locally for Yorktown Market Days, Alice Kelly Memorial Billfish Tournament, and the Pirates Cove Billfish Tournament. Showing steady involvement, dedication, and compassion to his community and school, Thomas constantly displays strong, positive leadership, and we are pleased to recognize him as our Senior of the Month. And Thomas hopes to go to UVA and become a lawyer one day. All right. Congratulations there.
Next, we'll tap Grafton High School, Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, the Senior of the Month for Grafton High School is Alex Ott. Alex wants to stand up along with parents Monica and Carl Ott and brother William. It is with great pleasure that Grafton High School names Alex Ott as our Senior of the Month. Alex is motivated, intelligent, and a resourceful young man who has impressed many at GHS. He has repeatedly maximized and excelled in opportunities both within the Grafton High School community and the community at large. Alex's stellar academic and extracurricular pursuits have prepared him for the rigor and opportunities that await him in the future. Academically, Alex pushes himself, he's pushed himself since early on, electing to take high school credit, advanced mathematics, and world language classes while he was enrolled in middle school. Once in high school, he continued to challenge himself by pursuing a rigorous advanced studies diploma, completing 12 Advanced and College Level Dual Enrollment Advanced Placement courses in the fields of English, History, Geography, Mathematical Analysis, and Calculus. Alex repeatedly excels in all these demanding courses, earning an impressive 4.53 cumulative grade point average, placing him among the top 8% of his class. In addition to the high academic standards, Alex's character is evident in the relationships he's cultivated within the classroom and the quality of work he consistently delivers. His academic scholarship yielded invitations into the National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and the York County School Division's Honors Program. Alex's demanding and diverse curriculum aided him in developing the high-caliber academic skill set needed to be successful in the next phase of his education. While Alex's transcript reflects a wealth of accumulated knowledge, it does not fully capture the discipline and determination that are evident in his extracurricular commitments beyond the classroom. His keen intellectual curiosity and critical thinking propelled Alex onto first place, second place, and honorable mention recognitions in the Division, Region, and State Science and Engineering Fairs year after year. Through his participation in the Grafton Marching Band, Symphonic Band, Jazz Band, and the Grafton Musical Pit Orchestra, Alex learned the value of hard work and dedication. His precision playing and camaraderie directly contributed to first-place superior ratings and outstanding player awards. As an athlete, he stands out as a competitive saber fencer, competing in local, regional, and national tournaments. His grit, perseverance, and ability to receive feedback as a competitive fencer will serve him well in his post-secondary pursuits. Grafton High School is incredibly proud of all of Alex's accomplishments, and we can't wait to see what he does next. Congratulations, Alex.
TAB High School, Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm delighted to introduce Parker Forrest as the Senior of the Month for TAB. Parker's joined, why don't you stand, by his parents, Mark and Ashley Forrest, his sister Peyton, yes, and also grandmother June Forrest. Welcome. Congratulations and thanks for joining us this evening. Parker is a spirited tiger and a pleasure to have at TAB High School. He leads by example, and he has a strong moral compass. Parker embodies the true spirit of leadership and academic excellence. He holds membership in the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Key Club. His extensive involvement in several student organizations speaks volumes. In his role as captain of the TAB High School lacrosse team, Parker showcased exceptional leadership skills, unwavering integrity, and a strong character guiding his team to success across numerous winning seasons in an undefeated fall season. In the community, Parker has volunteered as an assistant coach for the Area 33 Special Olympics golf team. Parker's head coach for the golf team shared the following. "I've had the opportunity to witness firsthand how generous Parker is with his time and energy. Parker is exceptionally patient and willing to work with every athlete on the team. He has been instrumental in the improvement of every athlete on the team this past year in particular. Due to many positive traits he consistently exhibits, Parker stands as an excellent role model for his peers, and his impactful contributions to both his school and community are greatly appreciated." Congratulations to Parker on being chosen the TAB High Senior of the Month for October. We're confident he will continue to excel in all future endeavors, and again, thank you for your wonderful student leadership and powerful personal example. Congratulations.
Finally, I have the honor of presenting our York High School Senior of the Month, Riley Brooks. Would you stand with your family? Dad Albert Brooks and sisters Meredith and Emma. York High School is proud to recognize Riley Brooks as our November Senior of the Month. Riley is a shining star in our high school community and embodies the very essence of what it means to be a Falcon. Riley's engagement within our school community is truly impressive. As a dedicated International Baccalaureate Program student, he consistently demonstrates his unwavering commitment to academic excellence. Beyond being a high achiever, Riley is also a well-rounded individual. He has utilized his leadership skills, serving as the President of the Green Team, Co-President of the Youth Volunteer Corps, and the Senior Class Treasurer. Riley's membership in prestigious organizations such as Mu Alpha Theta, Latin Honor Society, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, and the Scholastic Bowl Team showcases versatility and passion related to school environment involvement. However, what truly distinguishes Riley is his caring, driven, and compassionate nature. He brings an infectious enthusiasm and positive attitude to our school, proudly embodying the attributes of what it means to be a Falcon and his unwavering school spirit and deep love for YHS. Riley, you have set a remarkable example for your peers, and we're proud to have you as part of our school community. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Next, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards and Volunteers of the Month. Dr. Shandor is going to head down front. I think we're having the principal from each school come up as well. Our first is Ayla Randall, Mr. Schaefer.
Ayla Randall, come on up. I think every member of her family has been up here at one time or another over the past years. Yeah. All right. Okay. She's joined by her principal, Krista Brownlee, and her assistant principal there tonight, and Steve. And Waller Mill is very proud to introduce Ayla Randall, a remarkable fifth-grade student who exemplifies the true essence of service and compassion. Ayla is being recognized for her outstanding dedication to making a meaningful difference within our school and community. Ayla's commitment to service extends far beyond the walls of Waller Mill. Alongside her family, she has dedicated time to delivering Meals on Wheels. Her involvement in youth choir and her role in watching over children in the nursery at New Zion Church showcase her caring nature. Ayla's roots in service run deeper as her father serves as the Executive Director of Hospice House of Williamsburg. Ayla actively participates in events such as the Hike for Hospice House and generously volunteers behind the scenes at numerous occasions for the organization. At Waller Mill, Ayla's impact is felt profoundly. As a star ambassador, she selflessly mentors her peers, creating an environment of acceptance and positivity. Her recent nomination for a Student Council Leadership position is a testament to the respect and admiration she has earned from her peers and teachers alike. Mrs. Phillips, Waller Mill's School Counselor, beautifully describes Ayla as a child who radiates kindness, acceptance, and positivity. Ayla's infectious smile and genuine warmth create an uplifting atmosphere wherever she goes. Ayla's words themselves reflect her altruistic nature. She finds joy in helping others, expressing her love for friends and staff at Waller Mill and her passion for volunteering, driven by the desire to make others feel better. Her aspirations to become a professional gymnast, an astronaut, or an engineer reflect her boundless ambition and the multifaceted nature of her dreams. Ayla Randall stands as an example of kindness, service, and the embodiment of the values we hold dear at Waller Mill. Ayla is deserving of this award due to her remarkable commitment to others and her unwavering dedication to make the world a better place. Congratulations, Ayla.
Next, we have our Community Volunteers of the Month for Waller Mill, Mr. Charlie Williams. Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Krista, you want to come back up? And, yeah, there's, Mr. Searls is going to be accepting the award for Mr. Williams tonight. Mr. Searls is a fifth-grade teacher at Waller Mill. Mr. Charlie Williams has been selected as the Waller Mill Volunteer of the Month for November. Mr. Williams is being recognized for his exceptional dedication to fostering entrepreneurship skills among our fifth-grade students. For the past few years, Mr. Williams has graciously devoted his time and expertise as a mentor in the York County School Division Entrepreneurship Program sponsored by FreshInc.edu. His commitment to guiding our students through the entrepreneurial process is nothing short of remarkable. Mr. Williams serves as a guiding light, navigating students through the multifaceted journey of starting and managing a business. With his guidance, students identify problems, develop product concepts, create business models, and bring their ideas to life. He meticulously assists them in crafting business plans, establishing budgets, designing product branding, marketing strategies, and setting sales goals. Mr. Williams' authentic approach allows students to experience the empowerment that comes with creating and launching a business, a rare and invaluable opportunity at this young age. His influence goes beyond entrepreneurial knowledge. Mr. Williams models kindness, professionalism, and a fervent enthusiasm for hard work, providing students with the foundation they need to thrive in an increasingly challenging world. His impact on our school community is immeasurable, and we are deeply grateful for his unwavering commitment to nurturing the entrepreneurial spirit within our students. We celebrate and honor Mr. Charlie Williams for his exceptional contributions to Waller Mill Elementary School.
Next, we have Callie Gilligan from Yorktown Middle. She would come up with Principal Brian Fries. Yorktown Middle School is proud to recognize Callie Gilligan as our Student Service Award recipient. Callie is an eighth-grade student at Yorktown Middle. She's a member of the volleyball team and the yearbook staff. When Yorktown Middle School added a communication support program this year for students with disabilities impacting their communication, we wanted to create an opportunity for other students to serve as peer mentors. Prior to our mentorship program launching, Callie approached YMS staff to ask about volunteering in the communication support class. Her initiative accelerated the creation of the mentorship program, and her enthusiasm helped us grow the program as she recruited peers to join. Callie gives up a portion of her elective classes on a regular basis to volunteer in the communication support classes. Her impact in that classroom is hard to put into words, but we can simply say she reminds all of us of the greatness of our YCSD students. Outside of school, Callie is heavily involved in the Children's Ministry at her church, giving back to those younger than her. Please join us in congratulating Callie Gilligan as this year's Student Service Award winner. Stay up here, Mr. Fries. Our Volunteer of the Year is Ms. Kimberly Lenz, yes, Mr. Richardson.
So Yorktown Middle School is proud to announce Kimberly Lenz is our Volunteer of the Month for Yorktown Middle School, and she could not make it tonight, so on her behalf, Mr. Fries is accepting the award. Ms. Lenz is the Communication Coordinator at the Historic Grace Episcopal Church in Yorktown. The church has been a tremendous community partner for Yorktown Middle School for the past 11 years. The partnership has been a cumulative effort of the Outreach Committee Chairs and a dedicated team of volunteers. Ms. Lenz leads a number of the programs at York Middle School. She coordinates the Outreach Committee's school supply collection at the start of the school year and also makes sure teachers and staff are recognized during Teacher Appreciation Week. Kim was integral in getting Yorktown Middle School to be part of the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank's Backpack Program this year and led the church's efforts to supplement the backpacks with additional food for students and their families. Kim's largest effort this year was working with York Middle School staff and the food bank to launch a free monthly fresh produce market for York Middle School students and families. With the food desert which exists in part of our zone and the rising cost of food prices, Kim recognized the need for the additional resource for York Middle School students, and now they have the opportunity to visit the school's fresh produce market each month to select items with their families in a farmer's market-style experience. Kim's heart for service and keen eye for needs have been a tremendous asset to the Yorktown Middle School community. Congratulations.
And next, we have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. I'd like to invite Ms. Pam Neal. Yeah, y'all come on up. York Foundation Public Education Board Vice President to step forward and assist Dr. Shandor as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Jonah Wood. Jonas Wood, a third-grade student from Waller Mill Elementary for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We'd also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Ayla Randall from Waller Mill Elementary School. And Callie Gilligan from Yorktown Middle School. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month, Thomas Schreiner from Bruton High School. There you go. Go Bruton, that's right. Alexander Ott from Grafton High School. Parker Forrest from TAB High School. And Riley Brooks from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with our donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients.
Everybody, stay put up here. Now, everybody shoot into the aisles and take your pictures. We're going to hold them up here for just a second. Dr. Shandor is going to stay down front, and Ms. Cheryl Parr will be joining. This evening, we are honored to recognize the efforts of three YCSD schools for receiving the Purple Star Award from the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. Two YCSD high schools are being added to the list for the first time, while one of our elementary schools has received the designation for the second time. We're proud to announce that YCSD is one of three Virginia school divisions maintaining its Purple Star status this year. Schools retained the designation for three years before being required to reapply. The Purple Star designation status recognizes students, educators, and administrators for their work to create a supportive learning environment and to remove barriers to the academic success for children of military families. Because Virginia is home to over 78,000 military-connected students, and YCSD serves the highest concentration of military students in the state, we are proud of our school's efforts to serve military students and families in exemplary ways. At this time, we would like the following recipients to come forward to receive a certificate of recognition from the Virginia Department of Education. At their school sites, schools will be receiving the Purple Star Challenge Coin. This coin is our nod to the military community known for the practice of bestowing unit coins to those who have contributed to the mission. Dare Elementary has received Purple Star status for the second time, receiving tonight's recognition are Principal Lindsay Kidd, Assistant Principal Lindsay Kurtz, and Guidance Counselor Emily Neus. Come on up. Grafton High has achieved Purple Star start, wait, we got to do picture first. Grafton High has achieved Purple Star status for the first time. Receiving tonight's recognition are Principals Steve Gavin and Assistant Principal Tara Firth. TAB High has also achieved Purple Star status for the first time. Receiving tonight's recognition are Principal Mary Lugo, Assistant Principal Patrice Paudar, and Guidance Counselor Tatiana Council. Next, we move into our Accent on Academics. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. Again, good evening, Board members. Tonight's Accent on Academics presentation will be engaging educational experiences, Spring Bee and Garden Expo. Mrs. Conlin's Bee and Garden Expo is one example of many engaging educational experiences our teachers offer at Coventry Elementary School. Each spring, Ms. Conlin's second-grade students transform their classroom into a living museum where Coventry students and families can come learn all about bees. I'm not sure I want to come. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm just kidding. Through student presentations and hands-on exhibits, this student-led experience offers opportunities for our future-aided graduates to develop their research, collaboration, problem-solving, and presentation skills. To share details and introduce the presenters is Ms. Lisa Chalamo, Principal of Coventry Elementary School. Ms. Chalamo?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Shandor. I am excited for the opportunity this evening to showcase one of our many engaging educational experiences, our students' experiences at Coventry. Each spring, Ms. Conlin's second-grade class hosts a Bee and Garden Expo, where students and families can learn all about bees and the important role they play in every aspect of our ecosystem. Tonight, Mrs. Conlin and some of her former students will share their experience researching and developing this immersive, student-led, and student-created, hands-on exhibit with all of you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Conlin.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. The Bee and Garden Expo is an innovative, problem-based learning activity that puts students at the forefront of their education. In this student-led initiative, we embark on a cross-curricular journey to explore the crucial role that bees play in our ecosystem and address the challenges they face. The Bee Expo is not just an event, it's a dynamic educational experience designed to foster collaboration, critical thinking, and practical problem-solving. There we go. Sorry. As our world grapples with environmental issues and the decline of pollinators, the Bee Expo provides students with a unique opportunity to delve into the complexities of this problem. Through a multidisciplinary approach, participants will engage with subjects such as biology, ecology, agriculture, mathematics, and even marketing, as they work towards understanding and solving real-world challenges related to bee conservation. The student-led initiative empowers learners to take ownership of their education by becoming researchers, project managers, and advocates for change. The Bee Expo encourages creativity and innovation as students develop comprehensive solutions to address the threats facing bees, from habitat loss to pesticide use. Get ready to witness the convergence of various academic disciplines as students collaborate to create a buzzing atmosphere of discovery and action. The Bee Expo not only enriches students' knowledge, but also instills a sense of responsibility for environmental stewardship. Join us on this cross-curricular adventure where education becomes a powerful tool for positive change, and students become the driving force behind a more sustainable future.
Hi. Hi, my name is Karen. Welcome to the Bee and Garden Expo. Have you ever been afraid when you see a bee flying around you? Well, they don't want to hurt you, they're just trying to do their job. The more you learn about them, the more you learn to appreciate them. I'm going to tell you a little bit of how we learned about bees in second grade. First, we learned, we learned, we noticed the bees coming around us in the spring. Then we read a book about how important bees are to our ecosystem. They are a keystone species. We decided we wanted to help the bees. We chose topics that we were most interested in. Then we formed groups with our classmates to begin researching. We learned about plants and how important bees are for pollinating gardens, so we planted, planted 18 different flowers and vegetables for our second-grade garden. Once we had enough information, we created our displays to present to others, so other, so all, so we could, so they could also learn more about how important bees are to our ecosystem. We finally made invitations to our Bee and Garden Expo and families, as well as other classes, to our Bee and Garden Expo. The whole process, process from start to finish was a lot of work, but I loved every second of it.
Hello, my name's Reagan, and I'm here to tell you more about our garden. Bees pollinate our crops and gardens. Without bees, we would not have chocolate and most fruits and veggies. We learned that one reason why bee populations are declining is because of a loss of habitat. We decided that in addition to our vegetables, we wanted to plant lots of flowers that bees would like. When we started our garden, it was not much, but after a while, our garden grew. We watched our seeds grow into big, healthy plants. We made a worm farm and added compost and worms to our garden and hatched ladybugs and praying mantises to help fight off bad bugs. I loved it all, especially playing with the worms.
Hi, my name is Hattie. We began researching more about bees by looking at books in the library, books online, and watching videos. We even talked to a scientist, Dr. Daniel Swale, Associate Professor of Toxicology at the University of Florida, who told us all about the effects chemicals can have on bees. We used what we learned to study the bees in our garden and watch their behavior. A beekeeper came for school and showed us what the inside of a colony looks like, and the difference between the worker bees, the queen bee, and the drones. Did you know that only the female bees have stingers? Did you also know that because bees are a keystone species, they help hold the ecosystem together? Without bees pollinating, most of the plants that bees pollinate would also disappear. Additionally, our favorite foods would become rarer, birds might disappear, and there'd be a limited variety of crops. This is why we decided to do what we could to help the bees.
Good evening, my name is Silas. The best part of researching was finding out the new information. We were constantly learning new and exciting things that we had never heard before. We read and studied the best ways to grow a garden without using pesticides and chemicals that could hurt the bees. We researched composting, companion planting, flowers that bees like, how to create welcoming habitats with wildflower gardens, bee houses, and homemade bee baskets. We asked questions and found the answers. It was fun being able to learn so much.
Preparing for the expo was a lot of work. We had to plan, design, create, problem-solve a lot, work together, write our speeches, and present our information. We created displays to help our visitors get a better understanding of all the information. We made posters on Canva, and I even created a poem. The bee behavior group came up with a dance to show everyone how the bees communicate. We planted all the seeds that we could find, that we had read about, and took care of our garden every day. We made banana water and composted our lunch leftovers. We even made seed bombs to pass out to our visitors. Everything we did, we were able to explain how it all helped the bees.
The big day came. My name is Katherine. The big day came, the day that we had worked months to prepare for. We had practiced, and now it was showtime. We waited out of stations for everyone to arrive. We had eight different displays and the garden. There were so many people, families, teachers, and other students. Our classroom was filled. When people came to our station, we did what we rehearsed. We presented our information and answered lots of questions, and I danced the bee dance a lot. May I show you? So first of all, bees don't have ears, so they dance by, so they communicate by dancing. There are three different dances: the waggle dance, the round dance, and the sickle dance. I'm going to be showing you, showing you the waggle dance. It basically means the direction of the flowers, the distance of the flowers, and the quality of the flowers. To show the direction of the flowers, you simply face in the way of the flowers. To show the distance of the flowers, when you're waggling up, you go longer or shorter. And to show the quality of the flowers, you waggle more or less, and this is what it looks like. You waggle up. You waggle right. You waggle up again, and then you waggle left, until more bees start joining along, and that means they understand you. I was so nervous at first, but it was fun. I was proud of myself for being able to share so much information with so many people.
As you can see, this project is an all-encompassing activity. I've been doing it for years in both kindergarten and second grade, and this year I'll be using it as my lesson for reflective teaching evaluation. I'm excited to hear other ideas to make this project even better for the years to come. Thank you so much for your time, and save the bees.
First of all, it takes a lot for our young people to get up here and do a presentation. You guys did a wonderful job. Most people can't get up here and waggle on the camera.
Do you have any questions?
Board members, questions or comments?
Did you get a chance to taste honey? Yeah, okay. That was great, great presentation, great program. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, I think, learning that without bees, we wouldn't have chocolate, that's reason enough to save them, in my book. I just want to note from you guys, it sounds like you had so many different, you know, parts to this project to get to the presentation. What was your favorite one piece? If you had to pick the one moment that was your favorite, what would it be? You can all share one by one, you don't have to decide in one.
My favorite part was probably showing it to the little kids.
My favorite part was working on the projects.
My favorite part was researching.
My favorite part was presenting.
My favorite part was dancing.
I knew that's what you were gonna say. So I'm assuming you do this presentation, and this entire thing is done in the spring, correct? So are you guys third graders now?
Yes, third graders.
They shared it with the little kids.
I know, they shared it with the little kids. That's great. Any other questions or comments, Board members?
I had an opportunity to visit with this swarm before the meeting started, and Catherine, what was my favorite part? I was waggling. I don't know how well I was waggling, but I was waggling. Uh-huh? But that was a lot of fun, thank you.
I saw you, Mr. Myatt.
A little risky.
Congratulations again, guys, you did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. All right, we are gonna take a short break so we can celebrate tonight's recipients, and we'll be right back. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll move into our unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business, Board members? All right, then we'll move into our presentations, and our first is our committee updates, and we'll start down there with Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, absolutely. I wear a couple hats, sit on the CTE Advisory Committee, and also the Chair of New Horizons, Regional Education Center. By virtue of all the CTE activities that are ongoing across all grade levels in all schools, I've been providing updates on a regular basis at every regular meeting, so I won't do that to everybody, but I will just mention, the mock interviews have come to a conclusion. I know that they began in early October. I think by the beginning of this month, we were over 600 students. I know last year was nearly 1,000 students had gone through the process. I expect the numbers to be at about that, once we have an opportunity to tally. We ended at TAB High School last week. I know many of us had an opportunity to participate. That's dynamite. It, you know, lets the kids, or the students, grow their skill set, particularly with regard to interviewing, demonstrate poise, and also work on their professional presence. And it was delightful, they're dynamite, everybody's very well-skilled, very poised, and it was very enjoyable. So I'll be interested to see what the numbers look like there. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Egan-Botham?
Yes, the GIAC just met last week, and I've got some notes to provide, just some, you know, bullet points from what they were talking about and the work that they were discussing. The fall referral cycle is now underway with approximately 100 students, along with the typical first-grade screening. And students who are found eligible during the fall referral cycle will begin their pull-out classes during the first week of December, when the new units of study begin, while identified first graders receive their results in January. The Gifted Education Coordinator, Ms. Sarah Haywood, and the middle-school gifted resource teacher, Mrs. Jennifer Patterson, attended the Virginia Gifted Association's Fall Conference, and those session topics included how to incorporate service learning into the classroom, how to use AI as a teacher tool, teaching math with a lens of a productive struggle, and then helping students with different social issues. Mrs. Haywood also attended the National Association for Gifted Children's Annual Conference, and there are summaries in sessions, and information learned has been shared with the Gifted Education staff. Mrs. Haywood is also leading a VDOE Technical Review Team, which is the process that's used to provide feedback to school divisions on their local plan for the gifted. And the Virginia State Literacy Association has formed a Gifted Education Committee, and Mrs. Haywood was also selected to join that group. She does a little bit of everything. The purpose of this group is to highlight different best practices for instruction that are geared toward gifted and high-ability readers. And applications are now available for 10th and 11th-grade students who wish to apply for the Summer Residential Governor's School or the Summer Governors World Language Academy. And this information about the opportunities that's available at the, each school, the school counselors can give you information, and they're updated on the VDOE website. And Ms. Haywood is working closely with the school counselors to advertise these opportunities. Dr. Sherlock was also given an update, gave an update on the division's progress towards the addition of advanced science and history courses at the middle-school level, which has been a push for GIAC for a little bit, talking about some additional opportunities. The Bylaws Review Subcommittee was formed and is beginning their review process, and the committee had a brief overview on the goals and objectives from '23 to '27, which is the local five-year plan for the gifted that was presented by Ms. Haywood. And then finally, this is the first year that GIAC has had student representatives, and they are very pleased with the addition of the student liaisons, and has enjoyed, you know, talking with them about their opinions, their thoughts, and feedback on the programs here in YCSD, and how we can best serve the needs of the YCSD gifted students. And they've added a new and needed perspective, you know, to the community. And the committee would like to thank everyone for their support and ongoing work with the GIAC.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. I have the YFPE, York Foundation for Public Education, and this organization has been very busy the last few weeks especially, because they are the ones that do the prize patrols for the Teacher of the Year positions, and I was honored to be able to attend the one for the division, which was last week at Grafton High School. And it's so neat to see everybody come out and hear the stories of how these teachers change kids' lives. And that's what teachers do every day, and it's great to be part of giving those awards. And I would tell everyone that if you wanted to be in the YFPE, it is totally volunteer, and it's, the whole purpose is to help the division's teachers. We grant scholarships to help in an array of different areas for teachers to use it for technology, for, in the classroom, in order to help their students. And if you would like to volunteer, please see me, send me an email, call me, that's fine. See Bonnie Gray over at the school board office? Wave your hand, Bonnie? Yes, and we would love to have as many people join us for the YFPE programs as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I'm on the WHRO Committee, and Bert Schmidt was here at our last meeting and spoke, and provided the yearly report at that meeting, so there's not a whole lot new to update. We also announced some of the winners for some of the programs they sponsor, such as the spelling bee and so forth. So nothing new to report on that.
All right. The reason we give these committee updates is when you're elected into a school board, you are actually appointed onto a committee, and so my committee is a Special Education Advisory Committee. We had our meeting last week as well. Great intendants, we had folks from Student Services, Jermaine Hopkins and Dr. Richardson and their team were wonderful. They came and gave presentations on kind of the communication hierarchy of where families can go and get information, get their concerns answered, and talked a little bit about that. We had talked about Transition Tuesdays, gave a presentation on that. We had somebody from HR come and give another presentation. So really, it was a lot of information gathering, and then we move into the public comment section where parents are able to share any concern. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Hopkins and her team, because you guys are very, very diligent on making sure that you get back to families in a timely fashion with answers. And I know that that's very well-received in that committee as well. So again, every time... So again, every time I do these committee updates, I always say, if you want to be, if you have a student with a disability and you're interested in being a part of this committee, you can go to our website and go under Student Services and CAC, and there's a membership form there. They can't do all the work they do without membership to vote on that. So it's very, very important. You can just come and listen to everything at those meetings, but you can also become a member, so you can become a vote on the business that they're doing as well. So I would encourage families to do that. That is the end of our committee updates this evening, and we are gonna move into our HR and pay plan updates. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. Again, good evening, board members. Next, we're gonna have Dr. David Wrights, our Chief Human Resource Officer, please come to the podium. He's gonna share with you a brief human resources and pay plan update. Dr. Wrights? You don't need a stool?
I don't. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Shandor, members of the board. This evening, I'm going to provide with you, to you, a brief HR and pay plan update. With the creation of our school security officers, we do not have a school security officer sub and long-term rate. So you can see from this chart, due to this position, we have the pay grade rates to the right for $18.77. I'm not gonna go through all these, but just the first one, so you can understand the purpose, is our base rate. And then we have $19.71 for days, if they work consecutively for 11 to 20 days. And then 21-plus days would be $20.65. We also do not have bus driver long-term rates or bus assistant long-term rates. So there's no established rate for that. And on the right-hand side, you'll see those pay grade rates and the adjustments for the pay plan for that. We also have an intern position. There's no set rate for this position, and there are three levels for this position. You have a Level 1, 2, and 3. Level 1 would be a high school graduate. Level 2 would be high school diploma with some experience, and a Level 3 would be a college graduate. And then the positions of the Transportation Operations Specialist and Transportation Associate are going to be changed to a Lead Transportation Specialist and a Transportation Manager to reflect the scope of their work that they're currently doing, and to provide more leadership and supervisory expectations within the Transportation Department. And then lastly, on November 4th, we did a job jamboree, and I do appreciate anyone who, from the board, who stopped by and was able to see some of our new candidates walk in. But we had 31 candidates come in, and out of those 31, we did recommend 25 for higher. One of the best things about this job fair is it's a little bit off-cycle for job fairs, but we were, had the opportunity and the, just the opportunity to take some people off the streets that were coming in, who saw our signs, and we were able to fill some hard-to-find positions, when it comes down to custodians, to IT, to some security officers. So it just allowed us that opportunity to get those hard-to-fill positions filled. We do have another one coming up in February, which is our larger one, and so we're looking forward to that, too. And that concludes tonight's pay plan and HR update, and I will take any questions.
Board members?
Were any of those teacher positions ones that we currently don't have, like maybe there's, it's a long-term sub-fill that we're able to get teachers in there mid-year?
Some of them, yes, and some of them are not starting actually until January, because they might be either out of state or out of the area. So we're anxious to get those, but we are looking forward to them joining our team.
Great. And were the para positions, were they from other divisions, or were they new?
They were new.
Awesome.
Yeah. And actually, we had someone come in, Ms. Hopkins talked about having a unicorn walk into our building, and she was a para that actually worked with students with disabilities. That was a check. She was also someone who was RBT-trained, and she spoke Japanese.
Can you explain RBT?
It's the behavior technician that we have, that we're adding those extra positions. But she also spoke Japanese, and this was what we were looking for, for a specific student that only spoke Japanese. So we were paired with them.
So Jermaine was right.
I happened to be at the job for about an hour. It was extremely well done. I know a number of candidates were walk-ins, so this just demonstrates remaining active throughout the year, even this early. And I know I spoke to a potential custodian, a para, and a number of prospective teachers. And frankly, they all emphasized the destination, division dynamic. They're aware of our supportive culture, aware of our families in the community. Obviously, our reputation precedes us, and we had a good dialogue for about 15, 20 minutes, and it just helped reinforce some of what we know. And so again, staying active throughout the year has been great, so thank you.
I know, I also was able to head out there on that Saturday, and just the staff members that are spending their time on a Saturday to interview people. But again, if it's just that one person that we needed specifically for that one specific student, it just tells you that all of that effort put into that job fair is worth it. So thank you and your team, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights.
Next, we're gonna move into Comments of Citizens. We have public participation at board meetings. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics, and the second is for a forum specifically related to comments regarding the Capital Improvements Program and operating budget. Before I open up for public comment, I will share some remarks. As a reminder regarding citizen comments, to ensure that staff members presenting tonight and all those wishing to make a public can be heard, and are allotted their full timeframe, no outbursts, applause, or other disruptions will be permitted during the meeting. Should this rule be disregarded, I will provide one warning: any further disruptions will result in the room being cleared. The school board provides a public comment period for public comments, to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. The timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and the speaker should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and address. I now open up the public participation for Comments of Citizens. Our first is Jennifer Hurgett.
Please, please put on your, also, copies for your also digital tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Hurgett, 146 Cardinal Lane. I'd like to first thank you for not requiring the COVID jab to students. Other local schools did mandate the jab for athletes and students that were in extracurricular activities, so thank you. There is a local superintendent that will not accept religious exemptions for vaccines. Never mind that illegal immigrants in New York don't have to be vaccinated to go to school. Why would anyone want a religious exemption? My children were all vaccinated. They're in their 20s. However, if I had known then what I know now, we would not have followed the childhood schedule. After my child was vaccine-injured by the COVID-19 jab, I couldn't stop researching. I used to believe that our government agencies had our best interest at heart. How many childhood vaccines had double-blinded placebo studies? None. Read Chapter 1 of Turtles All the Way Down by Mary Holland. How many vaccines were given in 1962, if you're 61 today? Three vaccines, five total doses. How many vaccines were on the childhood schedule in 1983, if you're 40 today? 24 doses of vaccines. In 1986, pharmaceutical manufacturers producing vaccines were freed from all liability resulting from vaccine injury or death by the Childhood Vaccine Injury Act. The floodgates were open, a new cash cow. As soon as a vaccine is put on the childhood schedule, there is zero liability. In 2016, children received over 70 total doses of vaccines, even more today. The Amish still don't get vaccinated, and there's no ADHD, no autism, no cancer, no asthma, et cetera. I'll send you studies to back up this information by pediatricians, as well as in a Pennsylvania Senate hearing. Today in the U.S., four in 10 kids are depressed, one in 13 have food allergies, one in 10 have ADHD, one in 12 have asthma, one in 285 have cancer by the age of 20, and one in 36 are on the autism spectrum, according to the CDC. LearnTheRisk.org. Many diseases were eradicated prior to getting the vaccines, some on their own and some with clean water and sanitation. Some of the diseases are treatable with antibiotics. On the CDC website, what ingredients are in the vaccines? Formaldehyde, mercury, aluminum, unborn calf blood, pig blood, aborted fetal cells, human blood. Blue Cross Blue Shield pays pediatricians a bonus for fully vaccinated children under the age of two, but they lose the whole bonus unless at least 63% of patients are fully vaccinated, and that includes the flu vaccine. Are parents getting informed consent if pediatricians are getting paid to give the vaccines? On page 3 of the school enrollment form, you will find that there is a paragraph on how to get a religious exemption, as well as where to get one. Our rights are given to us by God, not our government. And I want to thank you all again for not mandating the COVID jab.
Thank you, Ms. Hurgett. Next is Gary Porter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Gary Porter, I live in District 2. Recent headlines have brought us some news that homeschooling is still expanding exponentially across the United States. In an article two weeks ago, The Washington Post called homeschooling "America's fastest-growing form of education." The national average is 51% annual growth, drawn down only slightly since schools began to return to in-person learning. Here in Virginia, there continues to be a 31% annual growth in homeschooling since the 2017-18 school year. There are lots of homeschooled children here in York County. Why is that? When we're told that our free government-run schools in York County are so great, some of them best in the state. There are several reasons why parents go to the expense and disruption of their lives to homeschool their children. During COVID, when homeschooling literally exploded across this country, it was parents refusing to mask their children, when it had become evident that this virus was no more deadly to school-aged children than the seasonal flu. The distance-learning phase of COVID, when schools were shuttered, also showed parents for the first time what their children were actually being taught in school. Many did not like what they saw. They saw their kids being told in classes as young as kindergarten that perhaps the doctor who signed their birth certificate might have gotten their sex wrong, that they might actually be a girl in a boy's body, or vice versa. They were taught that they were either an oppressor or the oppressed, depending on their skin color. That America declared us independent from Great Britain simply to keep its slaves, and that the very survival of the earth depended on these kids sending letters to congressmen pleading that they pass laws to get rid of fossil fuels. Now, I don't mean to imply that these are attributes of YCSD, but they do occur nationwide with alarming regularity, as evidenced by the public school teachers who brag about them on TikTok. Parents saw social-emotional learning programs collecting sensitive, private information about their children without the parent's consent or knowledge. For what purpose? The parents were not told. In short, many parents began teaching their children at home because the public school system had simply lost their trust. They saw their children being indoctrinated instead of educated. They saw the family's religious views and values being undermined, if not trampled underfoot, and schoolkids being turned into political activists. Just this month, I attended a conference of the Virginia Commission on Civics Education, where social studies teachers were given tools and techniques to help their students engage with their elected representatives. The Bible makes it clear that God holds parents and parents alone responsible for the education of the children. Many parents began to see that they might have to answer to God for how they raised their children, including how they were educated. I would encourage the new school board, who takes their seat in January, to discuss this situation, and ask how the division might reach out to the homeschool community with the aim of restoring lost trust.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. All right, and I'll close the public participation for Comments of Citizens, and we'll move into the public forum on Goals and Objectives for FY25 Capital Improvements Program and Operating Budget. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bill Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, please come to the podium. He's gonna share information related to our FY25 Capital Improvements Program. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, we invite the public to provide their comments and suggestions on two very important processes. First, the development of the 25, 2025 Capital Improvements Plan. The priorities, the comments and suggestions will help establish the spending priorities for our Capital Improvements Plan, and help to establish the renovation and construction projects of our facilities for next year. The second is the 25, 2025 development of the operating budget, which will also set priorities for next year's operating budget. For those who are unable to attend tonight or wish not to comment this evening, we do have that process that you can do it online, it's through our Let's Talk platform, and you can access that on our website. And those are my comments for this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
I now open up the public forum on Goals and Objectives for FY25 Capital Improvements Program and Operating Budget. And our first is Deb Wesley.
Mr. Bowen's a little taller than me. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Shandor, parents, and senior staff. My name is Deb Wesley, I live at 902 Dare Road, and I am the President of the York Education Association and a nationally certified teacher. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the York Education's budget and policy proposals for next year. We have the following specific goals: a competitive salary schedule and movement on the salary scale, protecting educators' time to teach and plan, additional behavior supports, smaller class sizes, ensure professional treatment of all employees, and support the National Board teacher candidates. Under each goal, we have specific recommendations and considerations that will improve the learning and working conditions of students and staff. The YEA would like to thank Dr. Shandor for his continued emphasis on improving compensation for York County employees. In the past two years, the school board has approved increases in compensation for all employee groups. However, we know across the United States, education employees continue to be compensated far lower than their professional skills. The YEA recommends a licensed salary increase to include a COLA, a STEP, and restoration of frozen steps to attract and retain staff. Para educators deserve better compensation as they are indispensable to student success. Additionally, the current 30-step pay scale minimizes lifetime earnings and stretches out compensation to more than 30 years. And quite frankly, we don't have many employees who are willing to make that 30-plus-year commitment to work for a job that doesn't necessarily pay a living wage, a living wage as defined by the Department of Labor. The pay increases per step are also minimal, and the demands and expectations of pairs continue to increase. The YEA recommends an increase for nonlicensed staff and a return to a 15-step salary scale with annual increases in steps. In addition, educators are fatiguing to the point of exhaustion. With thoughtful policy adjustments, YCSD can significantly improve the learning conditions of students and improve the working conditions of employees. You will note in your packet that YEA further recommends reinstating flexible tuition, reimbursement for YCSD employees who are improving their practice or pursuing a teacher license, and an increase and adjustment of current stipends and flexible tuition. In order to provide the most effective instruction, planning time must be protected as unencumbered time. Most YCSD teachers are facing an increase in the number of meetings mandated that impact their time to plan, assess learning, and develop engaging lessons. Compounding the issues...
Thank you.
I'm done. Because the timer went off. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Next is Amy Lee.
Good evening. My name is Amy Lee, and I'm a teacher at YES and a YEA member. Next year, YEA is concerned that there will be unrealistic demands placed on YCSD elementary teachers. Elementary school administrations, as directed by YCSD, central office scheduled, professional development, and required elementary teachers to conduct conferences while also collecting student data for growth goals, completing and uploading grades for report cards, and tasking teachers with completing student reading and literacy record databases. In this November, unlike past years, Veterans Day became a student day. There was no effort to replace the lost teacher planning time, lesson, or even spread out the demands. All elementary teachers were required to come in early All elementary teachers were required to come in early and stay late to accomplish the mandates, as well as using a number of planning times during the month. Teachers were forced to limit their own family time on the weekends and evenings to post grades and devote their limited family time to develop lessons across subject areas, including new literacy model constructs. Additionally, many teachers across the division used what should have been planning times for IEPs, 504, and RTI meetings. While all of these meetings might be necessary, there has not been any significant effort to replace the lost planning time or recognize the efforts of the elementary teachers. A planning period is defined in state code. For middle and high school teachers, a planning period should not be less than 45 minutes during the instructional day or the equivalent of a class period, whichever is greater. That includes passing time for class changes. In some cases, YCSD has compensated teachers for additional duties when the state planning time is not met and/or becomes encumbered with additional classes or larger class load, but more careful attention must be taken to ensure that planning periods are not encumbered. The YEA recommends that adequate staffing be hired so that teachers have the state codified planning time, and that the minimum planning periods are negatively impacted, adequate compensation is provided. Additionally, in Virginia state code, planning time for elementary teachers shall be such that teachers are provided an average of 30 minutes per day during the student's school week. When a teacher has an IEP, RTI, and a PLC meeting in one week, 135 minutes of planning time is spent in meetings. In this very typical situation, the elementary teacher's planning period is reduced to an average of less than 18 minutes per day. The impact is significant, and the unencumbered planning time schedule does not meet the state code. Even in the case of only two mandated meetings during the week, planning time is reduced to less than 30 minutes. The YEA is bringing this to your attention and asks that you recognize that the reality is that there is no planning time provided on those encumbered meeting days.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Bauer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, senior staff, and members of the community. My name is Carol Bauer. I'm a nationally board-certified teacher and member of the YEA. I reside at 314 Brook Lane. We congratulate you on developing and adopting a comprehensive strategic plan that encompasses specific priorities to improve instruction and prepare future-ready graduates, retain highly effective staff, and create a supportive culture. The YEA fully endorses these priorities, and to enhance this supportive culture, we recommend hiring additional behavioral specialists and mental health resources for the welfare of all students. As we heard from Dr. Shandor at the beginning of this meeting, this is needed and already is a priority of YCSD. Since the start of the pandemic, children have been under increasing stress and mental strain. Teachers and staff are continually working to support the ever-increasing number of students who exhibit behaviors that impact their learning and the learning of other students. The YEA appreciates the work of current staff to address the needs of students. We also recognize that it's an often overwhelming task with the current resources available. A supportive and caring environment for students can better be achieved with an increased in behavioral support staff. Additionally, the YEA recommends smaller class sizes to enhance the sense of belonging for students. It is difficult to hide and be left behind in a small class. Additionally, research has shown that a smaller class encourages students to take part in discussions and are more likely to share their opinions in classrooms, thus providing students with opportunities to become future-ready graduates and to practice collaboration with other students. The YEA also requests the establishment of a SIC bank to provide staff who are faced with significant health issues an additional safety net. These proposals with additional details and explanation can be found in your folders. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Brian McGovern?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Shandor, members of senior staff, members of the community. Brian McGovern, I'm pleased to be in my sixth year of teaching at TAB High School and my 21st year as an educator, and I'm speaking as a YEA member this evening. Forty hours is considered an average work week. Multiple studies have shown that an average teacher works about 52 to 60 hours per week. According to an analysis of professional workers, teachers work more overtime than any other profession. Working weekends and long hours into the evenings under intense scrutiny is detrimental to the health of educators as well as their family and social life. And evidence shows that it is clearly bad for education. Teachers have listed the lack of planning time and professional treatment as a reason for leaving the profession and as a barrier to successful implementation of evidence-based practices. Multiple climate surveys conducted by YEA and YCSD administration have shown that YCSD staff are dedicated to the work they do, and in addition, they want administration to be intentional and seriously consider their efforts, suggestions, and input as a well-respected and contributing partner in the many daily and overarching decisions, their impact on students' and working conditions. YEA therefore recommends that intentional and specific efforts be made to implement staff input concerning working conditions, and that a YEA representative be appointed on division-wide committees. Teaching is more complex than ever before as educators evaluate student growth and achievement, implement social and emotional learning programs, and plan learning for an increasingly diverse student population. Classroom teachers need more time to process, collaborate, and adjust instructions to meet the needs of their students. So YEA recommends an increased effort to eliminate unneeded mandates and unnecessary paperwork, at least in the absence of removing other responsibilities that can be taken off their plates, and further recommends that no new initiatives be added to the required instruction, again, unless other things are taken off. And we all know that custodial staff work hard and are often moved from building to building. Many staff are moved with little notice or consideration to the desire of the employee. Additionally, longevity at a building leads to community connections, which should be considered a given proper priority for staff placement. I thank the board for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Ms. McGovern.
Thank you, Ms. McGovern.
Finally, we have Ben Payson.
I'm Ben Payson. I live at 115 Arden Drive, and I have taught and lived and been a YEA member and lived in York County for 23 years. We certainly agree, I think, that there are times when we find that two heads are better than one. Certainly, YCSD employees who may find themselves in a stressful situation regarding their employment understand this. We want to thank Dr. Shandor for your support and validation of the need to develop a silent witness policy to allow employees to have a supportive person there to help them understand what is being discussed during a meeting. The YEA recommends implementing a silent witness policy for all employees. YEA believes that granting silent witness rights helps prevent misunderstandings, intimidation, and violations of civility because it is maybe human nature to convey feelings to a coworker, subordinate, or supervisor that are rash and in the heat of the moment. But pumping the brakes and asking for a formal meeting will help prevent these situations and help keep all parties accountable for statements made. Finally, silent witness rights help bring equilibrium to the power imbalance inherent in meetings when multiple supervisors address an employee. Silent witness rights help eliminate employees being exposed to supervisor intimidation. The YEA recommends that employees be allowed by policy to have someone with them, someone of their choosing, with them in any disciplinary meeting. This person is there to listen and help the employee understand what is happening, not to argue or dispute. He or she is there to provide support and absorb what is being said to and asked of the employee. The YEA also recommends the establishment of a SIC bank to help employees who find themselves in a health crisis and in need of support to make it through the serious health events. Finally, the YEA wants to thank you for approving the superintendent's policy that allows flexibility with nonrecurring leave. This has made a significant impact on uninterrupted instruction by YCSD personnel and has allowed for a reduction in coverage needed by substitutes. For the next fiscal year, YEA recommends adjusting the leave policy for staff to include an additional personal day. Adding another personal day will improve morale. Thank you for your attention tonight. The YEA recognizes the important job that you have assessing the needs of the students, staff, and the community. YEA is ready to further discuss all of the recommendations we have presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payson.
Thank you.
I now close the public forum on goals and objectives for FY25 Capital Improvements Program and Operating Budget. All right, next, we're going to move into matters by board members, and we'll start there down at the end. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, I think we've made mention of some of the activities. This remains a busy time of year as we approach the holidays. I've had opportunities to attend a variety of athletic events. The band expo last month, a number of us were together. Family engagement activities. We also heard the Teacher of the Year prize patrols, particularly a division-level winner. Obviously, we're thankful to our teachers, paraeducators, and support staff of the year awardees. Couple of quick highlights. Congrats to the TAB High School field hockey team. So, three-peat, their third state championship in a row. I don't think they've lost in three years. And so that puts them at 22-0 this year, and I think that's 11 overall championships, only behind Cox in the long term. So it's pretty remarkable. This is the second repeat, I think, 2011 timeframe. They had another repeat. And through my family, we've known many of the girls that participated and worked awfully hard to achieve this particular goal. So hats off to them. And then finally, traditionally, Thanksgiving is the beginning of the holiday season, so it'll be nice to be with family, particularly immediate family and friends. So I wanted to wish everybody, again, happy holidays as we extend through the New Year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. Mr. Iggenbauthen?
Yeah, I thought it was fitting to take this time to just share some of the things I'm thankful for. So I'm thankful for the teachers in YCSD who work tirelessly for their students every day, to the counselors who provide support to individuals, groups, and whole classrooms, you know, every day, for administrators who lead by example, paraeducators who work with kids to promote success in the classroom, to the nurses who make sure our students are safe and healthy every day, our school security officers and our school resource officers who make sure that they're safe and secure every day, school board office staff who work hard, whose hard work directly impacts the student growth in the building, our office clerks and secretaries who provide for all the needs that students and families have, our food service workers who ensure that every kid is fed and no one goes hungry, our bus drivers, assistants, transportation workers who make sure that every student's day starts with a smile, our coaches who give their time and talents to their players. And I'm thankful that kids have opportunities to showcase all the hard work through presentations, concerts, one-act performances, sporting events, and things of that nature. I'm thankful for my fellow board members for the devotion that you show the students and employees and families in YCSD every day. I'm thankful for the community who collaborates with the schools to make sure that kids have the resources and opportunities to learn something new every single day they're in the building. But most importantly, I'm thankful for the kids and watching them talk about what they learned, like we did today with Coventry Elementary School, and that is the type of thing that motivates me and recharges me to continue advocating and working for what I do and what we do as a board for the students and the community every day in YCSD.
Thank you, Mr. Iggenbauthen. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Brett. Just like to mention that on Saturday, the Bruton High School volleyball team went to the state championship in Salem, Virginia. They won the first two games, lost the next two games, and they were in the final third game. They were in the lead but fell just a little bit short, going down 15 to 13. And volleyball at Bruton is now a big thing. It was always basketball before or football. The volleyball is right up there with it now. So they were the state runner-up for 2A schools in the state. I was able to go last week to the VSBA convention with Jimmy and Dr. Shandor, and it was a very interesting time. It was good. I went to a couple of seminars, one of which was the legislative, the state legislative committee. What they were looking at was going to be the priorities for the Virginia School Board Association, and actually, it was right in line with a lot of mine. I was impressed with the items that they picked to push, and I hope that we can get those things done. The governor came and spoke while we were there and had an interesting talk for us. It was very good. But we had, out of 131 school districts that were represented, we had 97 voting delegates, of which I got to be one, and Jimmy was elected as the chair for the region that we were in. So that's a pretty significant thing. But we had a good time, learned a lot, met a lot of people, saw a lot of vendors. Gosh, I never knew that schools had so many vendors before. But it was a very good time and learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, we did attend the state convention in Williamsburg, and I was elected as regional chair. The reason Mr. Schaefer was able to sit and vote was because I had another meeting that I needed to go to for that region appointment. So I go for my orientation next month up in Charlottesville, so I'm excited for that and to learn a little bit more about the regional chair position. But the regional chair represents Virginia Beach all the way down to Gloucester, so it's a lot of school divisions in between. But before we went to the VSBA, I was able to attend the Teacher of the Year presentation at Grafton High School, and I'd like to congratulate Ms. Stephanie Pressley for winning the Division Teacher of the Year. But other than that, that's all.
All right, thank you. I know Mr. Myatt discussed the mock interviews. I was able to participate in three schools. I was trying to get all four, but the fever got me this year, so I wasn't able to do the mock interviews at TAB. One of the things that I noticed, having done the mock interviews for a few years, is that our kids are getting much better with eye contact, their resumes are getting better every single year. I know you guys have changed a lot about the engagement program and what we're teaching in those classes to get these kids ready, and I was very, very impressed, very, very impressed this year with all of those mock interviews. I'm grateful for that time. I elected myself to be the one to deliver the senior sign. We started doing that during COVID, but we didn't want to stop. So I get to kind of be the prize patrol ninja that goes around and puts the senior sign in the yards of our students before this meeting tonight. So that's always a fun, fun time, waving at the Ring doorbell camera. So happy to do that. Next month will be my last month doing that, but I'm very excited about that. Again, I tended the job jamboree at Grafton Complex and was able to do the prize patrol for the Teacher of the Year for Bruton, Grafton, and Mount Vernon. So that was fun, to celebrate those teachers and do that. Again, the CAC meeting last week, we already discussed that. And again, congratulations to Mr. Richardson on being the regional chair. I know that'll add to your duties, but grateful that we have that representation here from York County.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm looking forward to scheduling some school visits in December. I know we've got some concerts coming up that we'll all be attending. I'm excited for that. But finally, I wanted to just share some gratitude, too. Serving with all of you has been an honor the past four years. I know we were all serving during the most difficult time in public education that anybody can remember, and hearing your different perspective as we were making hard decisions has changed me as a person. I want to say thank you very much for that. I love being challenged by other people, and even when we didn't disagree, I appreciate the fact that we all respected one another. We were all serving for the right reasons. And again, I'm just grateful we worked as a team, and I'm grateful that we, again, were able to come together just at the right time. So thank you very much. I hope you guys all have a wonderful Thanksgiving with your friends and family, and I hope our public does as well. Next, we're going to move into financial matters, and Mr. Richardson?
Well, I have the financial matters report. So we have claims certified for payment for the month of October. Instructional-related expenditures totaled $331,560. They included payments to New Horizons for $162,300 for August and September. That was just for tuition for sped students. We had $71,730 for marching band uniforms. Old Dominion University, $45,700 for DODIA and WLARP content and staff development. We had another $14,800 for contracted speech-language pathologist services. This is language subscription was $12,000. This is language subscription was $12,800, and for prorated refund for tuition to Jessica Perotti for $12,750 for the school year '23-'24. And for kits for CTE, Bird Brain was $11,480. Technology-related expenditures totaled approximately $186,605 and included payments to Aspen Maintenance Renewal for FY24 for $112,200. And CDWG, that's Lenovo Chromebooks for second-grade one-to-one initiative program, $24,750. And for copier fleet services, $18,810. And for internet services for October was $17,645. And E-rate, for E-rate consulting services, was $13,200. Food service expenditures totaled approximately $576,855 and included payments to Sedexo, $458,450 for food service management and operations. Alto Hartley for the walk-in freezer installation that we got was $86,500. Gold Creek Foods for $31,905 for USDA foods. Operational-related expenditures totaled $413,495 and included payments to Mobile Lease Modular. That was for also not just the relocation of modular classrooms from Grafton-Bethel to Mount Vernon, I'm sorry, to McGruder, and it was also for the lease and install of modulators at McGruder Elementary School. And that was for $212,445. Dominion Energy, $113,750 for utilities, and Shehe for $48,000 for building maintenance vans. Remind 101, $27,900 for mass communication system for fiscal year '24, and for solid waste disposal services, $11,400. Payments to, related to administration, totaled $14,882 and included payment to the Virginia Risk Sharing Association for workman's comp claims. Payments related to construction totaled approximately 1.1 million and include payments to Heartland Construction, $354,800 for Seaford Elementary School renovation and addition. Schick Communications, $284,450 for Dare, Mount McGruder, and Waller Mill Valcom Systems. Carpentry and painting experts, $139,000 for Bruton High School, watering commons and bathroom renovation. Harbor Mechanical, $125,900 for TAB High School HVAC replacement, and that was done with CSLF RF funds. And I forgot to ask Mr. Bowman what that referred to, was that a grant fund?
SFR funds.
SFR funds. I thought that's what it was. I meant to ask you that before the meeting, just to make sure and clarify that. I clarified everything else. Forums and supply was $125,700 to Seaford Elementary School for furniture, and ACES, $75,000 for TAB Middle School HVAC, and school specialty, $12,000 for Seaford Elementary School furniture as well. October revenues, state revenue for October '23 increased by more than 1.8 million when compared to October 2022. The increase is a result of the 5% compensation adjustment and the increase in student enrollment. Sales tax revenues for October of '23 decreased by a little over half a million dollars when compared to October of '22, and this is a result of the change in the economic activity. Instructional expenditures for October '23 increased by approximately 2.5 million when compared to the previous year. The increase can be attributed to the increase in compensation and benefits for FY24 and the spin-down of federal SFR funds as well. Local food service revenue has increased more than $206,000 when compared to the previous year, and this is due to the increase in the number of meals served. And Resolution 23-77 requires the board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and there are nine items. If you've looked at the board docs on the resolution, totaling 1.3 million, and the details of which can be viewed on board docs. Madam Chair, I'll now move to approve financial matters as listed.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Mr. Schaefer? All right, Ms. Gray? Motion was bade my Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Schaefer.
You can go ahead and ask.
Nothing's popping up yet.
There we go. Yes.
Did you get them all?
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve financial matters as listed. The motion passes 4 to 0.
4 to 0?
Should have been 5.
Five to 0.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Gray. All right, next, we'll move into our consent calendar. We have first the approval of personnel actions. We have approval of minutes from the September 25, 2023 regular meeting, and October 9, 2023 work session. October 9, 2023, special meetings at 4:15 and 7:00. Special meetings on October 11, 2023, October 18, 2023, October 19, 2023, and October 23, 2023. We have approval of donations totaling over $610,000. Approval of HR and pay plan updates. Approval of a motion to approve Grafton High School student organizations and activities for the period November 20 through November 1, 2023 through November 1, 2024. We have approval of a motion to approve student activity and overnight field trip for the Mount Vernon Elementary School First Lego League. We have approval of an overnight trip for the TAB Middle School Lego League. Approval of a lease agreement between the County School Board of York County, Virginia, and Glen Laurel Association. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed.
Move to approve consent calendar as listed.
I'll second.
Motion was bade by Mr. Higginbotham, seconded by Mr. Myatt. Ms. Gray?
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed. The motion passes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gray. And next, we'll move into action items. We don't have any. We'll move into policy discussion, and we have policy discussion for policy file HA, negotiations, legal status. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Groll. Dr. Carroll has a brief update this evening, our chief operations officer, related to policy file HA. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you, you have Section H for quadrennial review. It was last reviewed in December of 2019. Section H consists of one policy, policy HA. As you know, Virginia code changed during the last quadrennial review, I'm sorry, during the last quadrennial that allows for localities and school divisions to enter into bargaining collectively if they so choose. This revision doesn't take a position on that. It just merely aligns existing policy to the Virginia code, to those revisions by altering the last sentence and corrects legal references. This policy has been reviewed by the Assistant County Attorney. We're asking tonight to bring this back at the December regular meeting for expedited approval, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Just have one, just for clarification. This has to do with collective bargaining, but not that we're taking a position on that, that we're just changing it to bring us in line with what state code basically says on that.
Correct.
And I looked at it, it's just an extra little sentence there and some number changes for the code.
There are still some steps that you would have to take if you wanted to do that, and in the end, it always comes up to a board vote.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? All right, thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Move into policy first reading. We have none this evening. Policy second reading have none this evening, and that will finish up with the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Groll. I had the opportunity to attend our job jamboree as well, and you heard a little bit about that earlier from Dr. Wrights. I'm really grateful for the staff members that showed up on Saturday to spend all that extra time, to all of our HR team members who came to meet and greet and just treat, you know, welcomed these folks into that day. And then we had a number of folks who gave up time to come in and interview. So again, when you have, you know, 25 recommendations on a Saturday in November, that's something to really be proud of, and especially the multitude of positions. So I'm really proud of our HR team and all the folks who contributed that, and we appreciate you all coming by to show your support. The YCSD Teacher of the Year Program, sponsored by Town Bank through the York Foundation for Public Education. The YCSD Teacher of the Year Program recognizes outstanding teachers who have displayed extraordinary teaching creativity and excellence at their school and in their community. So I want to also extend my congratulations to this year's Division Teacher of the Year, Ms. Stephanie Presley, a Grafton Middle School teacher. As a Division Teacher of the Year, she's now a candidate for the Regional Teacher of the Year, so we're really excited about that. Ms. Presley was one of three finalists, including Ms. Melissa Hendricks from Mount Vernon Elementary School, Dr. Sean Bowman from Bruton High School. Each are outstanding teachers, and we're very proud of them for this achievement. A listing of all 19 school-level teachers of the year, along with our three finalists, are available on the division website, and they will soon be posted in our office when you first come in. We have pictures behind the main desk of all the three-level teachers. In closing, I want to extend to all of our staff, parents, and students a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving and holiday break. I hope you'll enjoy making new memories with your family and friends. I did want to say one thing this evening. I appreciate Bonnie Grace subbing in today for Ms. Ford. All of our thoughts and prayers with Ms. Ford and her family and her mom. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Our next work session will be held Monday, December 11 at 4:30, followed by our regular meeting at 7:00 here at York Hall. We now have a need for two closed sessions. Could a board member please make a motion and a second to take us into a closed session relating to personnel matters?
I move that York County School Board convene in closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to the discipline of specific employees, staff leave of absence, and the appointment of an assistant principal pursuant to the personnel exemption of Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
I'll second.
Motion was bade by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Richardson.
Uh-oh. I winked out. We're going to need to vote, bye. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Everything just went down.
You're going to make me work for this one, huh?
Come on now, it's been four weeks.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Richardson to move into closed session, discuss personnel matters. Can I get everybody's vote? Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 5 to 0. Now in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Have a great week and a wonderful Thanksgiving. We're now in closed session.